All right, we can call this meeting to order. 6:30 November 13th, 2009, Select Board Meeting. Can kick it right off with the consent agenda. We have two warrants, AP 2019 and AP 2019 DPW.
They don't have consent agenda, but I'll say so moved.
No, we still have more.
Oh, okay.
A bunch of one-day liquor licenses. More one-day liquor licenses.
Finish off the season.
Um.
If you click on there.
Top of the campus, men's basketball, Mullen Center Arena floor, Court Club, all alcohol, four, 1/8 of 20, 1/18 of 20, 1/25 of 20, 1/29 of 20, 2/9 of 2020, 2/15 of 2020, 2/18, 2/26, and 3/7, all of 2020. Then we have one-day liquor licenses, top of the campus, men's basketball, Mullen Center, concourse concessions, wine and malt only. We have 1/8, 1/18, 1/25, 1/29 of 2020. Then we have 2/9, 2/15, 2/18, 2/26, and 3/7, all of 2020. Then one-day liquor license, top of the campus, women's basketball, Mullen Center, concourse concessions, wine and malt only, 1/11, 1/15, 1/22, 1/29, all of 2020, 2/8, 2/12, 2/22, and 2/29 of 2020. Then one-day liquor license, top of the campus, for hockey games in the Mullen Center, concourse concessions, wine and malt only, 1/11, 1/24, 1/31 of 2020, 2/7, 2/22, 2/29, and 3/5 of 2020. Then a one-day liquor license, top of the campus, hockey games, Mullen Center, behind goalie, Pond Club, all alcohol, 1/11, 2020, 1/24, 2020, 1/31, 2020. Then 2/7, 2/22, 2/29, and 3/5, all 2020. May I have a motion?
Go a little second.
All those in, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we have our public comment period. Don't know if anyone is here tonight for public comment, but welcome to take three minutes for public comments. Okay. Moving on. I would say since Eric is here and we don't have a time, we're going to do our tax classification hearing at 6:45. Um, maybe we can review the proposal for Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Uh, Eric Weiss is here from PVPC, uh, to discuss the program. I don't know, Eric, if you want to introduce us for the program. Thank you for coming.
Absolutely. Um, I, I met previously with some of the people in this room. Um, I know that, um, the town was using Bay State or is using Bay State, and Bay State has decided to close, um, for their own reasons. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, three years ago, put together a regional accounting program service in which we hired Eric Kinsher for Kinsher from Associates, Eric Kinsher from Associates, to do the, to do the accounting. That program has been very successful to date. In fact, Hadley was in the original bid that we put out three years ago. I wasn't in this position. That was when Josh Garcia was in this position. Um, so we have some familiarity with Hadley in terms of the numbers in your $20 million budget, and there was some information that went back and forth between the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and the town of Hadley at that time. At, once that bid came in, you guys chose to go in a different direction, and that, that, that leads us to today where you're now faced with the challenge of what to do when Bay State closes its doors and what are you going to do? The discussion that was had a couple of weeks back was all about can we, can we help to provide that service to the town of Hadley? The short answer is yes. Am I had David send this around? Did everybody get this electronically, or you want me to hand it out? I made some copies. If you want to hand it out, I'm happy to. You let me know what you want me to do. I've got it.
Thank you.
You're all good?
Yeah.
All right. So the first thing I wanted to do was go over that, that flyer or that piece of information in terms of the program information. We're trying to offer this program to as many municipalities as we can. Right now, Goshen, Chesterfield, Blandford, the town of Brookfield, and the town of Monterey are all using the program. When we reach outside of the, the district served by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, which, which doesn't account for Hadley, we seek permissions from the other regional planning agencies to do that. So that's why we can include Brookfield and Monterey, because they don't offer similar programs in those regions. So what we have is a, is a unique program, very similar to what you did with Bay State, whereby the person comes to the town of Hadley, they're employed by Kinsher, if they're not employed by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission or the town of Hadley. It's done on a consultant basis. They come in or they do most of their work, they do the majority of their work remotely. And that's, um, their, their process. We created this program three years ago because there was a significant need amongst communities to have this, have this, to put that out there. As I said, we, we hired Eric Kinsher. The bottom line here is that, as I explained when I was here last, we understand that this, um, is a critical need of a community, is a complicated need. It is not a role, a role that somebody can just easily step into to understand the ins and outs of municipal accounting and what's required by the state and tax forms and what needs to be filed when and certifying free cash and all the other pieces that go with it. It's not the way it used to be 20 or 30 or 40 years ago. It is, it's a different animal now that has to be done right, and the town's financial well-being is dependent on doing this process right. So we tried to find somebody who could do a good job, and we've gotten nothing but rave reviews back from having Eric Kinsher do the work for the communities that we work with. I manage the program in my job as regional municipal services manager. And that means I check up with the towns directly, and I check in with Eric Kinsher directly, and that, those don't cross. I check in separately to make sure that I'm getting accurate feedback information from both parties that are involved. How are the services going? Are your needs being met? Are they being responsive? There's a, there's an annual questionnaire that goes to the towns, but I check in with the towns regularly anyway. If you wanted to interview or can, can talk to any of the towns that use it, I would highly recommend you talk to Chesterfield or Blandford. Um, those are two people that are, um, one happens to be Josh Garcia was in this job. He's now the town administrator up in Blandford, so yeah. He helped create the program. Of course, he's going to speak well of it, but on the other hand, it is. Blandford was in a bit of a muddle when they brought in Kinsher, and that's all been straightened out. Um, the town of Brookfield was in them, let's say lightly, was in a bit of a pickle, um, and he helped straighten that town out. Um, and then Chesterfield, you can talk to Sue Labrie up there, widely respected, knows her stuff, and she's had nothing but good things to say. So I know that the town is worried about timelines in terms of when the services could start and everything else. Um, I have had conversations with Eric Kinsher about that. He has actually reached out already to the person who is doing your accounting work for you to see if they can make a deal. I don't know the answer to that, but I know he's reached out to them already. He is thinking that they could, he would have to hire somebody to add Hadley to his group of towns that he serves. Um, and he serves towns throughout the Commonwealth, some under the contract with us and some outside that contract with us. He would have to staff up. He's hoping that he can get some of the staff that is out there from Bay State, but that's a negotiation he has to take on for his own business, because it means if he brings somebody on, he's got to have enough work for them to do. But he is very interested. His timeline is, is February, March, in terms of what he could provide full service to you. I know that leaves you in a bit of a bind between what do you do between, say, December 1st and March 1st. And that's, that's a challenge for the town, and I get that. We don't have somebody we can just throw your way. I actually got a call from another town today saying you have somebody who can fill in for three months, and that's not the way this program works. Unfortunately, it's somebody we bring them under, under contract. I, I had some, I sent some questions to Eric Kinsher. It's always difficult for him and I to talk, because it's Eric and Eric, but Eric Kinsher, I go by Eric W. to make it work. Um, and he was saying somewhere in the 70 to $75,000 range per year, assuming everything is up to snuff. He was saying for any extra work outside the contract that we put together, if there's things that need to be done, he generally, he would bill that at $130 per hour. He's saying he would be available come March. What I did before, between the last time that I was in Hadley and today, is I also sent you a copy of a draft of a contract in which I left out dates and numbers, um, that goes through the details, which I'm happy to go through. What I would do is tell you that the critical area, I mean, the critical area you're worried about is what it's going to cost, and I gave you a range on that, what we can set up timelines on. The other piece is that if you looked at the, if you have a version of that contract in front of you, the key responsibilities between the town and Eric Kinsher are spelled out in the appendix. The, the front section is all what has to be in place. This is fully bid, so to come on with us, you, you don't have to go back at the bid, you don't have to do anything. It's bid by us on, on the town's behalf that use it. So that, we've covered bid law. The scope and timeline and everything is covered there. Our fees are four and a half percent of whatever Kinsher charges. That's just, we don't make any money on this program. It pays for my time and our business manager's time to keep track of everything. That, there's no, we're just making sure we get washed hands in this in terms of the service we provide to the towns. I can step into the, um, appendix if you would like. It goes over general areas of responsibility. For us, for us, we have all the management and contract administration. I have, I have reached the point now where I do everything electronically with the town, so the bills and invoices all go back and forth electronically. I know that you've worked with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on the programs in other places, so the arrangements would be common to that. The rules for, the rules, the, um, the role of the consultant is spelled out in the second section. They'll act as the town accountant, they'll prepare warrants and examine bills, record receipts, maintain detailed records, prepare Schedule A report. I'm just basically going down the list of 1 through 22 here. Annual reconciliations, mandatory quarterly reconciliation, annual reconciliation, monthly budget reports, budget for town meeting, working with the other town departments, collaboration with the assessor, town clerk, and other town employees as needed. Customized reports for town, town administrators. We went over the program that he's familiar with, the program that you have in place. I think it's VEDAR?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So they're very familiar with working with that, so there's no training, training up that has to be there. The numbers that you would need to get through to, to the annual town meeting. It always has that great clause of other duties as required in terms of what we need, what may or may not be needed in certain times. And then the, the second page of the appendix, to me, is also very important, because it lists what they're expecting, that your 2019 books will be closed, free cash will be certified, Schedule A is complete and submitted and approved by the DLS, your 2019 audit is complete, and that, um, in terms of any previous years, that things are up to date. If they're not, that's where some of the extra fees might come in, because they have to kind of catch back up on something, and something has to be put back in line which wasn't completed. And I'm not saying Bay State did or didn't do anything wrong, but there may be things that are left undone. I don't know that at this point. They don't know. So the way that he would, um, come to the town is he would come and there'd be a negotiation back and forth, and he has a pretty rigorous questionnaire that he would go through that asks a whole series of questions about the status of current things, so that he can come up with the best guess as to where things are. Some of that is actual transferring information from Bay State files to his files, et cetera, um, if that's able to be done at the time. The second section of that is the plan of services to the town, um, in which it lists how many onsite visits per year there would be, what they're doing offsite and remotely, the warrant processing process. Um, and we went back and forth in Monterey on the negotiation on how that would occur, so everybody was in the loop the way they want. Every town does warrant processing, just slightly different in terms of which hands it touches and what processes it goes through to have that submitted. He's more than willing to work with your town to make sure that works. So in summary, um, it's a good program. I was happy to inherit it and happy to work with the towns and happy to be able to offer it to towns in both Hampshire and Hampden Counties, that is, the service region, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I know we could do you guys well in this program, if it's what you choose to do, to ma, to have your accounting services operating in that way. I know we're providing a quality, or, um, company that is well-vetted at this point in time and is in this for the long game. He left sort of the private sector, left town accounting, to put himself in this business. He's looking for new towns to work with. He's looking for organizations like us to make the sort of layer where he doesn't have to be completely involved at the town level, that some of that can be pushed aside. Um, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is very much looking to work with towns in Hampshire County, obviously, with the change in status of the Hampshire Council governments. Um, so, and I know that's old news in Hadley, but I just wanted to make sure that you're aware. And I, I have worked regionally and municipally for over 30 years, and I would be happy to help be the go-between on this process and get this project up and running for Hadley. So.
Okay. Thank you. David, you have a question or comment?
So, Linda and I were talking about the, the gap between December 27th and, um, February, March, and I think the solution I would come up with is Joan Zuzco, who used to be the assistant accountant, can do enough to keep us together. Do you want to amplify on that?
Um, yeah, that was one of our options. We had, we have a few things that we talked about with, one is that she certainly is able and willing to step in, all of the trends working out. As you know, she's moving over to HR and all, but she did have, her initial hiring in Hadley was as assistant accountant, and she knows VEDAR about as well, I mean, really as well as anyone in town. And, um, she, we think that her, her picking it up would be a, um, a quicker getting up to speed than if we get someone outside in who doesn't perhaps know the vendors in our own, our, our system as well, and who, who are, who the various people are in town that you're dealing with, as, as for a, a short period of time. And the other thought that we had is if we're able to keep, um, with one of the staff people, if there was a, a continuation of some Bay State staff with, with a new company that we could, we might be able to work with, um, our, continue with our connection there with our person who's been coming in each week.
And like I said, you sent me.
And have her continue and bridge that gap until she's actually, you know, in some way.
And you sent me contact information. I reached out to Eric, and he reached out too, but I don't remember her name, but.
Mary, yeah, Mary.
Mary. So hopefully that will work out. I don't have an answer for you today.
So, I mean, so if she was able to do that, that would mean that Joan wouldn't be able to. But rather than get a new person in, I know we've gotten some names, but for two months, we think it would be a, a quicker, easier transition if we work with what we have, even though it's not going to be easy, but we think it is probably, on balance, one of the easiest ways to get there from here.
Would she be able to, um, do the audit and the other items that are mentioned there and close out those items, or?
Uh, she.
Who does your?
No. Melan's and Heath. We're hoping that we are going to get through that. She doesn't do, she hasn't had the background in the audit pieces. She thinks that she can help pick up with free cash if that's necessary. But again, we're hoping we will be able to get through that, since we do have until December, and we've got Justin and Mary coming out for the day tomorrow, and to both be here onsite for the day, so that we can hash all these remaining items out. But no, going through the audit is not something that she'd be care, uh, she'd be that comfortable with. On the other hand, I don't know who else would be. So it really is easiest, I think, if we can work our way with, um, with Bay State to continue on that.
And, yeah, Bay State. Well, also in terms of the audit process, if it's somebody that you've used before and they have familiarity with town, that's in your benefit as you move forward with this.
We do. Right.
Kind of make a motion that we, um, use Joan to, as our fill-in accountant, if needed, for the interim period between PVPC or whoever we go with in the March time period and when her current account contract ends, just that way we know what direction we're going in, and that way you can kind of move that way.
I wonder, do we need to do that tonight? Because I don't think she was aware that this is going to happen tonight. I think you're a little ahead of ourselves, so I hate to do that.
I draw that motion.
I'll second that, she's not here.
Sign her up. You weren't in the room, you were named.
So what, what would be most helpful, I think, at this point, would be if the board would give us a direction to go, so that Linda and I can sit down with Eric and Eric and work out the details of, of making that generic contract work for Hadley.
I would, I would prefer to have Joan be the bridge, um, instead of using somebody from the other company. I'd just say, let's just dissolve ourselves from that other company and move forward.
And have Joan, Joan do what she can to help train the new people.
Correct, until Pioneer Valley Planning can come on board full-time and, and do that. I just don't want leftovers.
Well, the thought, Joyce, was that it would be a continuation, but if she is going to get hired by the new company, that would be a natural transition.
Right.
So, I mean, so it's not just who, who was available, it's a matter of continuing with the same person, people that our department, same person, Mary, that our department has already working with every month, so it's.
So is that the option?
That we don't.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
And when I said, maybe it wasn't clear enough, when I said I reached out to Eric Kinsher, it was, here's the person, she's obviously going to be out of a job, are you interested in trying to hire her? He reached out to her, and I don't know where their conversations are at.
Okay.
But he's thinking, since she's already trained in Massachusetts accounting principles, and she's obviously, or maybe looking for a job, that there might be a way to make this fit.
Okay, I didn't realize it was going to be her.
There was another layer to that, so, yeah.
Okay, right. All right.
So, between those two.
That's a little different story.
So hopefully by, by your next meeting, we will have worked that through. But I'd like to involve them.
So what is the, what is the price?
We don't know. I, that's why, I was going to say, can we make a motion that we allow David and Linda to negotiate a contract with PVPC to come up with the municipal accounting service for, for us to continue?
Yeah.
I, I will say in response to that, that the way that we just set it up with Monterey is there was, because it was partway through the year, and so with this, is there was a price per month set out, and then you multiplied that by 12, so it was whatever number of dollars per month, and that's to be negotiated. Right now, we're saying 70 to 75 per year, and you can do the math by dividing by 12, but again, it's also understanding the status of different things in the town to understand where you're at.
What's your year?
Oh, same fiscal year. Fiscal year, July 1st.
Okay.
Yeah.
So was that your motion?
That was my motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? No, this one's? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thank you on behalf of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. It's good to be of service to the town of Hadley, and I hope we can work out a, a good arrangement that, that suits, meets everybody's needs.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight, too, and explaining it all to us.
Absolutely. I got to get out of Boston at 3 o'clock, so I was happy. When you wait too long to get out of Boston, you sometimes don't get out of Boston.
Yeah, yeah.
True.
Okay, we can, um.
Are we good?
We're good.
Yeah, we're good. Yeah. No, no, you're good. We can give you a minute.
Okay, thank you. Pleasure to meet all of you.
Yeah.
You too.
Thanks for coming, yeah.
I've seen you go.
Uh, so, so we're going to have our tax classification, uh, hearing. Uh, here this, uh, here are some recommendations from the Board of Assessors, uh, and take any action, so, I don't know if anyone from the Board of Assessors. Dan, are you leading this discussion? Yep, go ahead.
Um, each year, the Select Board has to vote on four tax options, whether to have a single tax rate, branded open space discount, have a small commercial exemption, or a residential exemption. And I'm just going to briefly go through and highlight parts of our classification report, uh, fiscal '20. For this year, uh, the average value is going from $24,900 to $28,800 per single family house. The tax rate is going from 1236 to 1278, if there's a single tax rate.
What was the value? Again, I'm sorry.
324.9 to 328. It's $3,900. That's in value, not tax.
324.9 to 324.88?
320, I'm sorry, 328.
328?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's a $3,900 increase.
Okay.
Uh, if you went with the single rate, it would be 1278. If you shifted it the maximum of 50%, the residential rate would be 939, the commercial rate would be $19.17. Using the 328 value, 328.8 value, the average single-family tax bill would be $4,202.6. If you shifted it 10%, it would drop to $3,978. Shifting it 25%, it would be $3,646, and the full shift would be $3,087. Commercial properties valued at the same figure would increase to 4622 with a 10% shift, 5250 with a 25% shift, and 6303 with a 50% shift. On page four of our report, there are five commercial and five residential properties, and it shows the impact of what a 10% shift would do to these properties. These are the same properties that we've used, basically, since we've started this report format. Uh, we replaced the owner's name with a letter, but they are the same properties. Basically, you're looking at a 10% jump for commercial and a 10%, uh, I mean, a 5% decrease in residential, if you shift to 10%. Our residential open space for this year is 65.34% residential and 34.65% commercial. It's a slight increase in commercial from last year, mainly due to the new hotel opening up and a few of the other new buildings, commercial buildings, being taxed for the first time. And we also had a, a large increase in residential due to the condominiums on East Street going in. Open space discount. Back in 2002, the DOR recommended that we eliminate the classification of open space in our classification of real estate. Most communities now don't have open space classification, so we have a, we currently have a zero value, so granting a discount wouldn't really change anything for this The residential exemption. What that is, is owner-occupied properties can receive a discount of up to 35% of the average residential assessed value. That amounts to, uh, $105,098 in value off of the average residential value of $300,280. That is different than the single-family value, because it includes multifamily and vacant lots. We estimate that almost 1,600 homes would qualify for the residential exemption. Because if, if the exemption is granted, any tax dollars raised by the residential class have to stay in the residential class, the tax rate would actually go up on property, or the amount of taxes paid would go up on properties that are assessed for $409,600. That they would actually pay more in taxes than if we had a single rate. If we shifted it to full 35%, the residential rate would jump to $17.19 before taking off the value decrease, while all the, all other classes would stay at $12.78. So on the bottom of that page, an owner occupied with no exemption would be 4202. Uh, with the 35% exemption, they'd go to 3845, a decrease of 359, while a non-owner occupied would increase by $1,446 in tax. The small commercial exemption, we can grant up to a 10% reduction in the value of the property, as long as the property is assessed for less than $1 million and has less than 10 annualized employees. Going through reports from the Department of Employment, there are 41 properties that meet these criteria in town. That would be a reduction in exempted value of $1,575,240. If the exemption were granted, the tax rate for commercial and industrial would go from 1278 to 1285, which is a, a slight increase, slight decrease. It's not really a whole lot of property value that would be exempted, because there's only 41 parcels in town. Some of the, the definitions on page eight. Our levy limit for this year is $12,825,464. With a single tax rate, if we maximize it out at 1278, we'll have $5,629 in unused levy capacity. That's the fraction of a penny that would be over at the 1278, which we cannot raise. The next page, the next two pages give the shift for each residential and commercial, what the tax rate would be in 1% increment shifts. The top line is 100% at 1278, and the bottom of page two is at 150%. It would be 939 per single family, uh, for residential, and 1917 for commercial and Just an addendum A, which lists the average fiscal '19 single-family tax bill in 11 communities. There's six single, uh, rate communities and five split-rate communities. And what we found from, on our analysis from last year, is that rates, communities that have a split rate, before the rate was split, their average single-family bill was $684 more than what hadly is. After the split, it's $319 less. And those communities that have the split rate are Westfield, West Springfield, Toyo Chicken B and Springfield. Looking back to page one, our recommendations are that the board adopt the single rate for fiscal '19, that we grant an open space discount, that there is no residential exemption and no small commercial exemption for fiscal '20. And if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Where do farms or agricultural, uh, properties fall under the definitions? I see residential, open space, commercial, I don't, am I missing the farms?
Anything that's agricultural is considered commercial. Anything that's in chapter, the tax is, if you split the rate, the tax impact is inconsequential because in chapter land, they're paying almost nothing in taxes on it. It's the people that have parcels that are farmed and are less than five acres that would get hit with it. So you might have a five-acre parcel that's assessed at $180,000 or 4.8 acre parcel that's at $180,000. That because it's actually being farmed, if you were to split it, their taxes would go up. But the big, the big farm parcels would not really see, uh, a major hit because what they would go up, their houses would go down significantly more.
And what's our, our current rate? You recommend?
1236. And if we, basically, we're gonna have to go 1278 to balance the recap, right, to the max. So it's up 42 cents. And that the average increase is $186 for this year on the average single-family house. And that's made up of a couple factors. It's the normal 2.5% increase. Some of it is from the values changing and going up. There's about $32 or so in new debt exclusions that are on there. And, uh, one factor that a lot of people don't realize is UMass bought the NAS building, the second building that they have. And when taxable property becomes exempt, that property, the taxes that they pay get spread out amongst all the other taxable properties in town. So that's a little bit over $18 for the average house if UMass bought that building.
So the, if we were to do anything like the residential exemption, that shift or whatnot for owner-occupied versus non-owner occupied, how many houses would be impacted that are non-owner occupied?
Uh, you're probably looking at, in the neighborhood of 200 units.
Okay.
But it would also impact any vacant land. So if somebody has their house with a couple of parcels in town, they would end up paying more if you did the residential exemptions.
Okay.
So if we, and I'm just throwing this out here.
Yeah.
As, uh, looking at the chart here, if we were to go at the, I guess it would be a commercials, basically a 7% shift, that would drop the residential rate to 1230-ish, which is slightly lower than what we're paying now. Is this including all the stuff that was passed at town meeting, the $32 worth of?
No, this is just what's being paid for debt that's being paid this year.
Yep, yeah. Okay. So it'd be down around 1230 versus the 1236 we're at now. I don't know, I'm kinda leaning toward a, looking at a 10% shift here because all I'm hearing from that along with a small commercial exemption, I think would be realistic. Because I'm hearing a lot of pushback from people that are tired of every year increases.
I think we, if we were to do something like that, it's a slippery slope because once we start down that path, we can get an exemption and keep going and look at the chart of...
Can you even make it worse?
Holyoke, you know? I mean, they've got, it's up to the point where residential and commercial are off by a factor of two or more. And so if we start down that path...
So you're saying shift possibly, but no exemption?
I'm just saying, if we start shifting, it's a slippery slope. And then what happens to the businesses and all those kinds of things as well? I, I don't know, I just, I, I see what you're saying and I, I agree with what your intent is. I just don't know if like, making the decision right now, tonight, when we're presented with this, if it's the right time to do it.
Well, and I'm not saying we have to make the decision, I'm just...
Yeah.
Throwing it out there too.
Yeah, I think it's something worth learning more about, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, we've had a couple of presentations of folks come in and talk about the split rate versus the single rate. One of the things that we had talked about was if we, if we, because a lot of people get confused about the, um, the fact that if you, if you make the shift, it doesn't increase your tax base at all. It's just that you're, you're reallocating the existing pie.
Right.
So you're not creating any more revenue by doing this. To your point, it's just who bears the burden of it.
Right, yeah.
So, so I, I see where you're going. What we had talked about at home point is when we were seriously looking at the possibility, really for the first time, of doing an override, that if you went down that path, that would be an appropriate time to make a change so that then, that, you know, you're, you're increasing taxes and then...
You're basically shifting your rate to commercial, too.
Exactly, you're shifting your rate to commercial. I think the concern has always been that if, if we make this transition, that you actually bring people's tax bills back that's lower, uh, which feels good for a year. And then you're just off and running again. And then there, there's always been concern about collateral damage. I mean, I've always agreed that, you know, I wish we could tier the commercial and we can't, Dan, right? We can't, yeah, there's no separate classification for like big box or something like that.
How can you do that then for farms that have more property than somebody that just has five or six acres?
If it's in chapter, it has to be at least five acres actively farmed. If it's under five acres, they don't qualify.
Okay.
State law.
State law, so that, that's why they would be taxed more?
Uh, yeah, they, they don't get a value reduction.
Do you have any idea what the percentage of farms in town are that have less than five acres that are not in some sort of chapter program? That's probably a tough question, but...
Yeah, a lot of what we have is in chapter.
Okay.
I mean, we've got probably 400, 500 parcels that are in chapter.
It's over 2,000 acres.
We've got probably about 6,000 acres that are farmed, yeah, and in chapter right now.
There are a lot of parcels that are, like one acre or less than five.
There's a lot of pieces on seventh area that are 2.4 and unless somebody buys two or three of those parcels, they're not in chapter. So they're paying based on 20, 30 grand as opposed to 3,000.
And, uh, the one reason I was asking about the residential exemption is just to encourage, you know, less kind of student stuffer type purchases, uh, you know? And that's slippery too because there are, some people, families want to rent a house and that kind of thing, so, you know, it's tricky. How do we penalize certain things and not reward others or, you know?
Yeah, I'm afraid by making a shift where you might temporarily satisfy one group that looked, has legitimate concerns about, about property tax increases, but then kind of creates another group to come in and argue the other side of it future years.
I don't understand right along, you know? I don't want to see empty storefronts and big boxes that are vacant.
Yeah, and if we start raising the rates, they're gonna start looking elsewhere and then it's, you know, but their valuation is high, so they pay a lot of taxes.
Their valuation is high, you lose one of those and then you're gonna have a real tax problem.
I mean, I'm, I'm always open to looking at it, um, with more analysis. I think, I think to, to your point, to, to make that decision tonight, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable at all.
Yeah.
But to David's point, you know, we do have a lot of concern out there about, um, the affordability.
What's the deadline for? When does it have to be done?
The tax rate. Tax rate, that's, this has, the hearing has to be concluded and you have to vote before we submit the recap.
Right.
Yeah, so we're talking about, because we're late in season, maybe we have to start by Friday.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, so I, I don't, I don't see doing anything for 2020.
I can't wait.
But I think if the board wanted to seriously...
Yeah.
Take a look at this, then we could put a plan in place so that we're doing a lot of the legwork in the first half of calendar year 2020.
I think the motion would leave it all the same right now.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. But we'll accept the recommendations of the assessments.
Yeah.
I'll second.
So I guess my question is, Brian?
On a single rate.
Are, are we this late and this short on time because of the free cash issue? Is that why or?
All right, has that been resolved or not?
No, we're gonna be meeting with the, uh, friend tomorrow and get that all worked out. We don't need free cash at this point to set the tax rate, but we did defer the town meeting to as late as we could in hopes that we would have free cash.
That took 30 of all that personnel.
Any, any further discussion?
These have got some good rates on cards, maybe over half a million dollars or something the way we're spending.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
But, um...
I think we should, I mean, if it's something we seriously want to consider, we should put it on our calendar.
Throughout the year, we should visit it and get some numbers together and see what the businesses think about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to...
Have more of a hearing where we don't have to vote, but a hearing where we hear what people have to say.
This last-minute stuff is ridiculous. How can you have a public hearing or, or debate or discussion about things when you have a deadline of tomorrow?
Yes.
I agree.
And that's not, um, you know, I'm not blaming the assessments.
No, no, no.
Yeah, typically, what we do is we do this in two steps. We present a lot of the information, give everybody a couple weeks to think it over and then pick the vote. Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury this time.
So could I ask maybe, um, at a, an upcoming financial management team meeting, um, Dan, you know, you, you know what data elements or data points are available to you? And maybe we could just talk through what sort of information would be helpful for the board to enter? And, and again, you know, first quarter, second quarter of next year would be fine. So once the train leaves the station, we can't do anything right away anyway.
What communities have found is once they go to split rate, it kind of snowballs. You'd have to go into the 150 at some point. And the state actually changed it several years ago to 175 for communities like Springfield and Hoyok where they were paying almost three times what the, the residential rate was. They've since said, no, this is not right, and they rolled it back to the 150. But a lot of communities like Hoyok and Springfield, they're, they're at, just about at a $25 tax rate. They're not experiencing, they don't get their 2.5% increase every year. So they're kind of stuck for revenue.
Since they grow 32, nothing really good to investigate it.
Yeah, okay, thank you for coming and presenting tonight and getting this, getting this tied up.
I mean, your, your colds here, since 1995, we had $147 million in commercial...
Commercial value.
And industrial value. What the hell are we doing with our money? We gotta keep raising the taxes or if we're gonna split, split the rate. No, 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 it's a question for this board, not for you.
$1.9 million in taxes, that's roughly 15% of our tax budget. It goes to town meeting.
Raise the bills.
I was gonna say, we're still the lowest on this list, so it's hard to... Okay. Um, all right, where are we at here? Let's, why don't we do the SWOT analysis? Because there's a lot of books here for that. Uh, school, Council on Aging and Library. School, would you like to go first?
I would, except it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't matter, whatever you...
Does anybody want to go first?
I'd be happy to.
You wanted to go first, David? Thank you, yeah.
Stacy did.
Yep, whatever you prefer. You can stand up, you can sit down.
Stacy did. So I think most of you know me, Haley Wood, um, being the Director of Senior Services for Hadley. I'm, I'm sharing with you a summary of the SWOT analysis for 2019 that was prepared by my predecessor Suzanne Travisano this past August. Hoping I'm hitting the main points that are relevant to this group and the town in general. I thought I'd start with sharing the goals of the Council on Aging. Those are to improve the quality of life of Hadley's residents aged 60 and over and to offer tools to remain independent within their own community through healthy aging programs, services, education, and social interaction. And the current demographic of, um, people over 60 in this town is 34%. 28% is the state average. It's gonna go up. So, um, most of you know, I'm sure you know that SWOT is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I'll start with just a summarization of strengths. We have a strong professional outreach team, um, really headed up with, by Lauren Hannigan, our outreach worker who is now at 25 hours a week as a, as a permanent shift, voted in recently at town meeting. Um, we have a, a shine counselor, Jane Kennedy, who is very actively involved at our center during open enrollment. I myself am a former outreach worker, so I bring, um, skills and experience in the realm of, um, access to public benefits to, um, to the town and support Lauren. We have a weekly, our, our veterans agent is, has weekly office hours and he is very alert to finding ways to make sure that any eligible person who has served in the armed, in the armed forces, has, um, access to whatever benefits they're eligible for. Another strength is our very strong friends group, um, which is comprised of about 90 volunteers, um, who do many, many things, who perform vital functions like, um, staffing our reception desk, they fundraise, they, they, they significantly contribute to, um, our ability to, to do things and purchase things. They oversee the production of our newsletter and, um, PR in general. We have a triad partnership with the sheriff's office, with the sheriff's office and other town first responders, um, which, for example, this week delivered, um, many sand buckets to area seniors, um, for the, for the coming winter and have other programs in place to, um, that are specifically designed for, um, vulnerable older adults. We have a new van system utilizing a new van. That van system currently runs Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 9:30 to 1:30, with very reasonable fares. And we have, um, we're seeking a, a grant to expand that service to be five days a week. And I think that, um, the, the older adult community in this town, it can be counted as an amazing strength because, um, as evidenced by the new senior center, um, it's a very strong grassroots, um, group that can get things done and have a very effective reach and a strong voice. Weaknesses, we have a small staff, only two people are full-time, me at 40 hours and Violet are programs coordinator at 35. Lauren Hannigan, our outreach coordinator, is part-time and we have no paid staff on reception. We believe that we'll need a, a maintenance staff for the new building that exceeds, it's hard, it's hard to picture how the transition will go and I would, I, I believe that we will, we will need, um, a staff person who might be also in charge of maintaining other buildings in the town. Our van needs weather protection, that's a current weakness, and it's parked out in the open and it will be for the winter. The van system is in a formative stage and although I've just talked about it as a strength, it's, 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 we're new to organizing transportation on this level and there are some bumps in the road and some irregularities and some communication mishaps that are happening. And I, you know, we plan to address and strengthen that service as we get more accustomed to managing it. Another weakness would be that only about a third of the town's 60-plus population regularly utilizes the center. We, we have high hopes that, um, our new space will attract a new set of people, but we would, we will, we'll be diversifying our offerings and becoming more effective at getting the word out about what we do and how we can help people and, um, how they can enjoy what we have to offer too. It's not just about services, it's also programs. Opportunities, the Massachusetts Council's on Aging has regular grants for a number of relevant programs for older adults. There are things that need to be seized upon quickly and planned for and there's, but that, that's sort of an ongoing source of opportunity that, um, I'm alert to. We are current, uh, there's a current, um, PBTA grant proposal out that I, I refer to for, um, expanding our van services that will provide a strong opportunity. We, I look to collaborations with local artists and other creatives in this town for programming and revitalizing what we have to offer to people and attracting younger, older adults and revitalizing what we have to offer to people and attracting younger, older adults to our department and our space. Of course, the new building opening in spring 2020, probably April, is an immense opportunity. We have, last year was the first year of a tax work-off program for seniors. We're offering the same thing this year, and we have five great job descriptions that will, should give people an opportunity in this, who are eligible in age, income, and whether or not they're homeowners, to have $500 off their property taxes. We're also growing our ability to help certain vulnerable adults, particularly people who are on mass health, because that's some experience that I bring to the table that I plan to help our population navigate. Threats include unmet home care needs, where it's difficult for people to age in place when they become increasingly frail, able to maintain their homes, able to clean their houses, and able to care for themselves in certain ways. And Highland Valley Elder Services, which is the regional area services access point, is very challenged to meet the needs of the entire service area that it covers, which is all of Hampshire County and some big municipalities in Hampden County. And, you know, we have a number of people who are enrolled in their services who don't have a worker. So it's very difficult for people to access the help they need to stay at home. That's, that's a strong threat. Economic insecurity in general for people who depend on Social Security and small pensions that, of course, are now fixed and not keeping pace with the rising cost of living. The rapid growth of people affected by dementia is a threat that I see as a worker, as someone who's been in this field, and we, I believe that we are challenged to even be dementia competent, never mind dementia-friendly in our, in our community. I think that's a threat. And the future of Social Security and Medicare in general, which always seem to be up for grabs at the federal level, certainly creates, let's say, a climate of unease that is very anxiety-producing for older, lower-income adults, older adults. I just want to close with a recommendation that, one is in the works. We're obtaining a car, a vehicle, to help with transportation needs that's going to be donated to us. I think this is going to really increase our responsiveness and our ability to, to help people in a more nimble fashion than we can with the van system. I believe that we should establish a transportation volunteer corps through the RSVP program. And I would recommend the creation of a maintenance position for all municipal buildings, including the new senior center, which could also help us coordinate openings and closings after hours, which I'm seeing as another, another strong likelihood with the use of the building, which will be very attractive to other people who want to use various function spaces. And we currently don't have the staff power to handle that, and I think it would be a good thing to be able to marshal for revenue and increased interest in the center.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Well, very nice job. Thank you for all that information. That's a lot to digest, so thank you. And good job for your first, first attempt at it. What is it, one month on the job or something?
This is week number four.
Week number four, yeah. So, great job. Thank you.
Haley, just a quick question on the transportation. Reading a lot about that in the newspaper lately. Obviously, North Hampton's having its own struggles with their senior center, but I know it's come up in East Hampton and other places. PBTA, has there ever been, I know at one point PBTA was supposed to be providing like minivan service to help folks, whatever, is that just?
They do.
They do?
They still do. And we, Lauren will often arrange rides for our clients who need them to supplement what we can do. So they're still being utilized. What they're, the PBTA grant that we are seeking and have an app, an active application under consideration for, their strategy, I think, is to unload some of those responsibilities. So if we took on another two days a week of van service, they could reduce what they're already offering. So we, yes, PBTA does offer van services and I think has special rates for our age cohort, but it's tricky for, it's tricky for a lot of people to use it. It's tricky for a lot of people to use a van system. It's hard to think ahead.
It's planning.
It's planning.
It's scheduling and planning.
That's right.
That's PBTA's biggest problem.
Right. And I mean, and I, and we're running into it too. So we're, you know, kind of in that learning curve of organizing a transportation system.
There's nothing for emergencies.
Besides 911?
Besides 911.
No, we cannot.
Well, sometimes that's overused for the wrong reason. So unfortunately, when somebody can't get a ride or whatever, get to the doctors, then they head to the emergency room, which is not always appropriate. So I'm looking at it from that end too.
I think David mentioned it last week, but thank you to Steve Lewis for the vehicle donation.
Indeed. Yeah.
And the, the cover for the new van that kind of, we never saw anything, right? Or was that?
That's soon, next year's capital plan.
Next year's capital plan.
So the fire department, maybe.
Okay. Yeah, because I know the fire department had some needs there too, so.
I think it'll happen.
Okay. Yeah, takes time.
We're minding with them because it was cheaper to do shared rather than two separate.
Yeah, yeah. That makes sense.
Makes sense.
Okay, okay.
Do you have to put up one of those?
It was like a.
Vinyl?
No, steel carport type thing, right? It was basically. North Hadley?
What was transported down here, Josh?
Just an idea.
I think that man has, gonna have use for that.
Joanne, would you like to go next for library?
Sure. So I sent this out to you. We met as a board and did this with both Patrick and the trustees. Strengths. So we provide a wide range of services and programs. We just kind of came to your high school and raided your high schoolers and had a great after-school program today, actually, and feel like we're hitting lots of age range in our programming. And I think that will get people excited to have better space in the new library. Not a lot of people know this, but we participate in CWMars Regional Library System, which you all take for granted, but if we didn't, we couldn't get books from other towns, we couldn't exchange and get books from other places. So it is a bonus that we participate in that. Our circulation numbers are high and have risen steadily. We have monthly directors reports, it's all on our website and clearly indicated. We have strong support from the MBLC, as we know, by our 3.9 million dollar grant. We have a committed trustee group that meets regularly and all are actively participating. We have an active friends group. We have experienced staff. The new energy-efficient and fully accessible library is under construction. That's not a strength. We have diverse and loyal patrons. We have a central location, and we have an established capital campaign and elaborate capital fund. So we're, we're not only thinking about our building, but we thought about our future. So the capital fund we started is set so that it will go on even after the building is built. We will kind of, we plan on doing annual appeals and keeping a capital fund for the library to town graciously help us set it up, and we're excited that we have this capital fund. For weaknesses, we have, obviously, in our, if you look at our current building, we have a lack of space and we're not handicap accessible. Our friends group is there and active, but they're small. We would love to grow our friends group. And the cost of the new building construction, the higher bids may reduce funds available for furnishings, equipment, and landscaping. Some opportunities, an opportunity is to grow and strengthen the friends group to really reach out, especially as we get a new library, people might get excited and we might be able to grow our friends group. To improve and broaden our website, Facebook and social media exposure. To build new and stronger partnerships with other cultural town organizations and interests, like the schools, the society, and Hadley Media. We have the PTO meeting in our library just a few weeks ago, the elementary school PTO meeting. I had to meet in our basement, it wasn't handicap accessible, it was hard. So in a new library, they're going to have a meeting room that they can just go into. They don't even have to, if it's after hours, you don't even have to access the library because it's a separate entrance for our community room. So that, I think, will bring a lot of goodwill to the town for another place for people to meet. The new building will generate lots of excitement, interest, and use will bring opportunity for donations and more capital support. We hope that people will get excited and really start giving for our annual capital fund. So threats. Physical constraints may make retention of experienced staff and maintenance of that adequate hours difficult. So if, if for chance, library funding is cut at state level or local level, things may change, could happen, the same thing, we don't know. A tight town budget could negatively affect building and grounds maintenance if, if that happens. We're not, we're just obviously let you thinking. Sustainability benefits and energy cost savings of a new building may be reduced if unable to install the solar panels in the metal roof. So we are working on that. We have a capital campaign. I actually just got word that we got some exposure on TV22, and we had folks giving to the solar panels, which is nice. But if we are unable to put them on, it means more energy costs. And changing town demographics may impact demand for services. That's all we got. Any questions?
Seems, seems good. Can't think of any questions off the top of my head. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm just gonna say one dirty thing that I told Patrick on the phone, is that it would be great, don't get mad at me, but if we scheduled this like regularly in a calendar for us to do, I thought, I think it's a good exercise as a board to go through this. We dedicated half a meeting to really talking, to like taking a step back from day to day and thinking about the library, and I'd love to just get it on our count. I mean, we could commit to doing it ourselves, but I think it's beneficial to the town. And I, I just wonder if all of you would at some point consider, you know, every November or whatever you suggest, what we, we would do this. Because I do think it was a good opportunity for us to say, okay, we're building a building, we're always immersed in that, we were able to step back as a board and look at the bigger picture. Just a good opportunity.
Yeah. Well, thanks for participating in it, because it helps us to just think about all these different things and trends across the town and what's good and what needs work still. So thanks. Next, I know we have the school on there, so.
Sure. I just would like to start, which I meant to say at the special town meeting, I'd like to start by thanking the select board, the finance and capital committees, and the tax carries for the support that they showed for the schools, which is pretty typical. We don't take that for granted, so thank you. So you have a copy of the Matrix of Strengths and Weaknesses, Opportunities, and Threats. I'm not going to read those to you, I'll just talk about the larger themes. We think about the strengths in terms of three major strengths. Our students, our faculty, and this town. And so our students are remarkable. They're creative and critical thinkers, they're effective communicators, they're great collaborators. And what I'm most struck by of our students is that they genuinely, so they don't, not only want to be skilled and adept problem solvers, they want to be good problem finders. They're constantly thinking about the challenges that their generation faces, and they're also imagining the kinds of challenges that we might face in the future. And they also understand the distinction between, what I say is a distinction between being smart and being wise. So they get that smart people know a whole lot of stuff, and our students are knowledgeable. They also understand that the difference between smart and wise is that wise people try to use their intellect in service to something greater than themselves. And we have countless examples of our students doing that. I often share the weekly update with you, where we show some of those examples of students contributing to this community, to their schools, to seniors in town, just countless examples, where they've identified problems even within our own system. I'm thinking of a graduate year last year who looked at our tech moaning system, so how we get Chromebooks into the hands of students every single day, and he said, this is a mess. So he created an entire system, an electronic checkout system, an inventory system for us. He's since graduated and is gonna major in engineering and computer science and rule the world. If he sees this on YouTube, I'll work for you one day. But he's just one example of students. He's emblematic of the student body at Hopkins Academy. So that's perhaps our greatest strength. Our faculty are not a group of people who constantly ask, what do you mean? One more grant, one more thing, win, go, and stop. They're excited, they're energized, they look forward to implementing practices that will bring about the best possible outcomes for our students. And examples of that are we have teams of teachers who are working on the development of innovation pathways. So you may have seen in the paper that we received preliminary designation from Governor Baker for two innovation pathways, one in environmental and life sciences at Hopkins Academy and one in business and finance. We've also been invited to submit a final proposal for an early college high school model. We're doing that with Greenfield Community College. We'll submit something called a kaleidoscope application. Essentially, it's an application to be considered to be part of a cohort. There'll be very few districts that are invited to do this, to look at how we can make school education more engaging, more interesting, more joyful for faculty, for students. We just recently, another example of something a student did, we had one of our students, Allison Markowski, Ally Markowski, who I think is going to or has sent an email to the select board chair and the town administrator is looking forward to perhaps presenting to the select board. She submitted a grant on behalf of the district. We found out today it'll be funded between $2,500 and $5,000 to hold a cooler communities expo, educate people on ways that we can reduce our carbon footprint and be more environmentally conscious. This is a passion of hers and several other students, and she asked to work with me to write the grant, submit the grant, be the event organizer and project lead when we implement the projects. We have seen, it looks like, because we don't have our October 1 count, we submitted our October 1 count, but we won't have the report back from the state. But at this point, our June numbers for school choice, students choicing into our district, were 95 in June of 2019. We graduated six seniors who were choosing in, leaving us eight to nine students who were choosing in. It looks like we're up to 108 in school choice in. It's just over a 20% increase from last year until this year. Again, we'll have those numbers certified in about a month. And the third major strength is the town. We don't take lightly or for granted the level of commitment and support that we receive from the town and from the community. His town funds the schools well above minimum local contribution, we're keenly aware of that. We feel an obligation to ensure you get a return on your investment. I've tried to provide you with some examples of where we are trying to provide that return on investment. We recently received, Hopkins Academy recently received a college success award. It was granted a college success award because the percentage of students who go on to college from Hopkins Academy and who do not require any sort of remediation, so they don't waste time in non-credit-bearing courses that cost them money, is much higher than the state average, it's over 85%. That's just one example of how, for students and also for the town, we do see what you invest in actually deserve a good return on that investment. Our weaknesses and threats. So there's a declining enrollment across Western Massachusetts, there's a declining birth rate, this is affecting not only K through 12 public education, but it's affecting colleges. It's affecting colleges all through the Northeast. You've probably heard about colleges that have had to close because of declining enrollment and are having significant financial difficulties. So that's certainly a problem. We're fortunate that we have far more students choosing in than we have students choosing out under public school choice program, but it's, it's this kind of, I don't know, it's this kind of insidious game where we're just taking one another's students and inviting them into each of our districts. And right now, I'm not sure at this point, we have opportunities of additional grants, and we continue to write grants. And right now, I'm not sure at this point, we have opportunities of additional grants and we continue to write grants to support expanded programming in the schools. And, and in the town, we certainly try to support the town with some of our grant writing. The Mass Taxpayers Foundation has reported a budget surplus for the state. Right now, they're reporting somewhere around eight hundred and seventy million dollars at the state level, that's from Mass Taxpayers Foundation. So the governor was recommending just over about a hundred million of that be spent on education. Houseways and Mees is saying they're advocating for something more like eighty-four, eighty-five. Of that, they're looking at about eighteen million for charter reimbursement, which would be good news. But the recommendation right now is to change the charter reimbursement formula and to change it from reimbursement over a six-year period, closing, narrowing that window down to a three-year period. And actually, for most districts, you would get reimbursement for a year. You would only get a second year of reimbursement if you were an underperforming district that had a lot of seats, charter seats. I, I mean, I wish the state would simply fully fund the existing chapter forty-six formula, which under that formula, the town, since FY fourteen through FY nineteen, the town would be owed just over a half a million dollars. It would be nice to see that fully funded. And my concern is that even if they changed the formula, I'm not certain what would change in terms of the obstacles that prevented the previous formula from being fully funded. Like what precisely would be different that ensured this would, this new formula would be fully funded. So certainly, the continued growth of charter schools presents a problem, not because they're inherently bad, they're wonderful public school options for families. But because the, the current funding model makes it really challenging for towns, particularly for smaller towns, to manage charter school expenses. And so overall, we have a tremendous amount to celebrate. And most of that stems from the fact that we have a dedicated, talented staff, we have a supportive town. And we have students that, you know, I'm excited to grow old, I mean it, like they're brilliant, they're dreamers, they're doers, they're thinkers and they're kind. So I'm not worried about it. They're gonna build me robots and driverless cars and I'm gonna be good. They'll be great doctors and great people, they already are. If there's anything that we can do to demonstrate a better return on investment, just let us know, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any questions? How does, how does the restructuring at the state level of the budget affect Hadley specifically, the school funding formula and all that?
So the changes to chapter seventy, if, which it's not, it doesn't look like they've gone in this direction, but there were four models and fully funded, if all elements were fully funded, the projection and the way they did this projection is they looked at projected enrollment about, well, less than ten years out, so about five, six years out, about twenty, twenty-five. They said if all elements were fully funded, then Hadley, with their enrollment projections, would see an increase to chapter seventy of six hundred thousand dollars, which would be fantastic for the town, well deserved for the town. I always want to be careful that the schools here, our faculty certainly understands that's not an infusion of six hundred thousand dollars to the school by any means because the town is already funding the schools well above minimum. So it'd be nice for the town to recoup some of that money in chapter seventy. But it does not look like that, the fully funded model, it would take them a while to get there and it's not their starting point. So I think the way it will go is that it will benefit more larger urban districts with a greater percentage of students classified as high needs. So there'll be something, there was an increase in chapter seventy funding that we did see and that's great. It won't be, I, I don't foresee it being a windfall.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean I'm not grateful, like if you're a state legislator watching, keep it up, you know, it's good, keep it up.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Anything else? And I believe Board of Health is next week, Hadley Media, although they're behind the camera. John, I don't know if you want to say anything, or Drew kind of sent us the list, I don't know if there's anything in, in particular you want to say.
He told me that the SWOT report that he wrote kind of stands on its own and that you guys all have it. And he let me know, he prepared me and I, you know, I read it this afternoon and I'm prepared to answer any questions you guys have. I don't really need to do a big
Yeah.
presentation, I don't think. It's pretty simple.
Yeah.
The only thing I might add
Yeah.
is, where am I?
Town channel.
Are you on there?
I haven't really added anything, you know, we're, we're excited about the space, we're excited about the possibility of maybe moving downstairs to be more accessible to people at some point down the road. But, yeah, it's all in there.
Okay. Any, any other questions for Hadley Media?
Doing a great job, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for
Thanks for saying so.
Doing these.
As you all are, everybody's working hard to, for the town, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I think that's good for all our SWOT analyses for tonight. Just thinking what we want to do, if we want to do, do we want to do senior center, library and fire substation building projects now so that these folks can go home?
I saw Jane shaking her head.
Yeah, yeah.
You know I'm gonna stay here all night.
Would you like to start, Joyce, the fire substation?
I don't really have too much more than I offered last week, we haven't done anything more. I sent you some, the update of our, our meeting last week and when they met, and they met again today for finances, there was something about a light pole that we needed near the driveway going towards the, from the side to the back, so they're putting in a pole that way to have extra lighting on that side. That's probably the only, only changes right now, they seem to be moving along, there's no bumps right now, so seems good.
Okay, great. Library, yeah, good.
Yeah, library's moving along, looks like framing is coming up, right? So next week, it looks like we're on schedule for that, unless something happened that I missed.
Nothing.
Okay, yeah, so we actually start seeing some
Oh, the pole went in well and the floor support or?
Yeah, well, the slab.
Slab support, yeah.
Yeah, and I know there's some concern about the weather, you know, temperature fluctuations, but the experts are saying, don't worry about it, so.
Yeah.
So that's good. And then other than that, I think, you know, a lot of focus on the building committee focusing on interior, making decisions relative to colors and all of that good stuff and really fundraising, it's probably a forefront of everybody's mind.
Are they gonna be able to get the base coat on the driveway where the senior center is in the next couple of weeks? Do you know? They're a couple months behind, but.
You're talking about the senior center side?
The whole.
No, the, the library side. Are they doing the whole thing together or they just?
No.
I don't think so.
If they're not, they are gonna be separate?
Yeah.
That was a couple, a couple of people calling, the asking questions.
I don't think they're doing the base coat over there, or binder, binder coat or whatever, yeah.
At the library, but
At the library, the senior center, yeah, that's the plan right now. I mean, if we get two feet of snow between now and then, probably won't, but, yeah, knock on wood.
Yeah, you had to say that.
Well.
Sorry.
They kind of skirted it this week so far, so let's not hold our breath, right?
And something I wanted to talk to you guys about, library, I might as well just say it now, is we wanted to talk to you guys about the sign up front because we were gonna do a shared sign, so I was hoping I could come to your meeting and talk about that on the ninth, maybe?
The signage for the actual final signage for the buildings?
Yeah, like we're gonna do a combined Hadley, senior center, library sign, I know this is a big debate, but, yeah, yeah.
Can you believe that?
I know, it's way out.
We just got our like, you know.
Construction sign?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, anyway, we're hoping to come talk to, a few of us come to the meeting and talk to you.
Yeah, of course, of course, just let, just let Allison know when you want to come and she'll add you to the agenda.
Okay, yeah.
You're always welcome.
Yeah. All right, senior center, I've got a bunch of, some notes, good on the financial side, some change orders and AV scope to discuss, but I don't know if you guys want to say anything about the project or where it's at or what it's going?
Exciting, Molly talked about all the colors and everything being chosen. Today we got to see the furniture that we've been through this whole thing and what rooms were actually gonna look like and the furniture is out to bid, so it's kind of exciting.
Yeah, so we have a couple of things in the budgets I just wanted to go over, so a couple of, one thing is we got a seven thousand dollar credit since we didn't have the construction trailer, getting a credit for that. EDM has started to credit us the eight thousand dollars for changes. So far, they've credited us five thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. So we have some money coming back. We have one change order to approve and that is change order number, what was it? It's probably right here. Two six R two. And this is for the bollards along the south side of the building. We were basically going to have a sidewalk there and it was elevated and that was gonna serve as a curb. But after looking at it on the site, we're gonna have it kind of a even grade on the south side of the building, but we need the bollards there for pedestrian protection. And originally, we had talked about this being in the twenty thousand dollar range, but it's come back at eleven thousand five hundred fifty dollars and forty-four cents on my sheet. I can look at the actual change order and make sure that's the number.
Well, you're really learning how to spin this stuff now. A few of these under your belt. It's supposed to be twenty.
Working on my own project. So, so yeah, so I don't know if we'd like to make a motion to approve that change order.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And then we have
This one might not go so easy.
Yeah, this is gonna be harder. So next is, we had sent the audio video quotes out for bid. We've gotten the bids back. The senior center committee voted this week to approve this bid for one hundred forty-three thousand dollars, one hundred forty-three thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars and seven cents to Pro AV Systems out of Chelmsford, Mass, they came in as the low bidder to provide the AV scope for the building. I would just say that, you know, this project budget is looking really good. We had two hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget for furniture, fixture and equipment. This is slightly high, but we have a contingency in the budget that we're well within and the contingency covers this discrepancy. And I mean, we're still, if you look at the project budget, we're not into the original contingency number whatsoever and this falls within that, that reason why that contingency is there. And it's something that will add value to the senior center as a whole and something that we've been planning on having there since the beginning. So I would recommend that we award these folks the contract and get this work started.
Well, see, I'm just looking for the FFNE line.
So FFNE, I can show you here, it might be easier than that sheet, but it, this is the original budget. So two hundred fifty thousand was for all the FFNE and AV equipment is included in that number.
So with this AV equipment coming in at the one hundred and forty-three, what are you expecting FFNE to wind up at?
Do you guys know what that is approximate estimate?
Furniture in general is somewhere just under two hundred. One of the reasons we didn't have an absolute number for this early on is because we were told, and I believe correctly from what I know, is that technology is changing so rapidly that they could have spec something two years ago, which is when we were starting this whole process. And that is absolutely obsolete financially and availability. So they just put off doing that, knowing that it would be in the contingency budget.
But there wasn't any like baseline scoping in terms of, you know, for the, we're gonna have
Oh, yeah, we want projectors here and, and screens here and video monitors here, yeah, we knew all of that, but the specifics of how it was being hooked up and running.
Yeah, but is the, is the one forty-three, did we?
That's the whole thing.
But did we, did we add on to the original scope?
No, no, it's the same scope that we had.
Or strictly just lack of information about the
Yeah, it was, we didn't ever have a, a sense of cost on it because they pointed out, and I believe, it wouldn't have been a valid number anyway.
Isn't this forty-three percent above what the projected number was?
They were, they were throwing out a hundred thousand, yeah.
Yeah, we, last, last meeting or two meetings ago, we talked about it, we were told a hundred thousand for an estimate. And that we were, we were, it was spun at that time of being at the most a hundred thousand, it might come in lower, so. Now we're forty-three thousand above that.
But that's why I was asking to stick that in.
It's always been in the budget, but not with the number.
So that makes the FFNE
It was probably a hundred thousand two years ago.
So it basically makes the FFNE line item, with this addition, with, with this cost included, is about a hundred thousand dollars over budget.
Yes, which will then come out of contingency.
Which we have there. We're not cutting, I guess what I want to make clear is basically the savings we receive because of the, the lower than expected bid, the one thing that went into that number is putting the metal roof on the building. Everything else so far, including this, is covered within that original project contingency. We're not eating into that savings with this number that's there.
It's just, it's just hard because again, the, the other, the counter argument, and again, I think everybody here wants the very best build up. We're gonna do this, do it once and do it right, big, big fan of that. But it's just hard because we in reducing the size of the building theoretically, there should have been some sort of rate of condensing, I guess.
But I don't think we reduced the number of rooms, did we? We still have the same
We lost one conference room.
So we lost a conference room, but we didn't, you know, so we still have, most of these rooms were in the old building as well. I guess we lost, I don't know how many rooms there are that are gonna have the AV equipment, but, you know, it's quite a few.
Everything's still the same, it's, it's just less, so it's, it's just smaller. You still have to put up four walls in your room, you still have to put floor, ceiling, light sockets.
And put the AV equipment in that room, it's like
So that, in that sense, there isn't a big difference.
And I get that, but, you know, when you're talking about audio visual equipment and low voltage wiring and stuff like that, the smaller the space that you're wiring, the less cost you have, the less speakers you need for your sound systems, the smaller monitors, screens, projectors, et cetera, et cetera, so there, there should have been some savings and it just doesn't look like that happened at all.
It sounds like they just kind of booted the Yeah. The estimate, not, not you, maybe, but whoever was helping with the estimating in the first place, that probably wasn't the right answer on the AV. I mean, there should have been some amount of work put into it, you know, and I think we're paying for it now. I completely agree with the rapid change in technology. You know, computers we paid four thousand dollars for three and a half years ago, only cost nine hundred today. You know, the, the cost has been coming down, so it's kind of unfortunate that on the AV side, it looks like it went way in the other direction.
So what's our contingency balance right now?
Seven hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, that's
Ballpark.
Our balance right now is total is four hundred sixty-three, nine seventy-eighty-five. And that would include this number.
Meaning after?
Yeah.
After, if we approve it.
If we were to approve this tonight, we'd still have four hundred sixty-four thousand dollars remaining in our balance.
And then minus another hundred thousand because we're gonna be over on FFNE, right? And by the time the project's done, or is that already factored into here?
I believe that is factored in.
Into here.
Because we increased the budget to include that. Because we increased the budget to include that. Yeah, I can keep, I can keep making arguments for this, but I don't know if we wanna make a, just, uh, make a motion to approve this. You know, I mean, we do have to recognize seniors, nearly 30% of our population using this building, you know. I don't wanna throw the schools under the bus, but that's 7% of our population using schools, and, you know, we spend a lot of money there as well. I think this is a fair number to provide audiovisual IT for the senior center in the scope of the whole thing.
Well, my thing is, is if they, if they have the money, they're not coming back for anymore. So if this is where the money's going, uh, for contingencies, then, um, it should be done now while the walls aren't done, and you can put the, uh, electrical and everything that you need in now and not think about having to do it later on.
Yeah, this is gonna, this is gonna be in that building for 30 years, so...
That's my thing, is I don't wanna see, we've made mistakes in the school and things like that, with not putting enough, uh, fiber optic and things like that, that, to run. So I think, you know, we should certainly look at, at, at this and what it, what it be.
Yeah, I don't disagree that it needs to be done now. I just think either the scope is way off, or the projections that we started with were just ridiculous, because, um...
I mean, if the, if the bids were wildly different?
Right.
You're gonna rely on what they're saying in terms of the nature of what they want to do?
Yeah, there, you know, there's like a clo- pretty close gap, top three, I would say, and then the, the latter two are, you know, higher, which I think is pretty normal when you're looking at bids.
And I know we still have to get from here to April, but we're getting closer and closer. So is anybody worried about any of these other line items right now? I mean, again, you don't have a crystal ball, something could pop up, but there's nothing...
No, it's all really good. It's all less things underground showing up every day.
I think the underground's also...
Yeah, that's... I mean, there is one that I'm asked, that we're getting some more detail on, which had to do with, millwork and shelving and blocking and different things, line number 29 on that sheet if you're looking. But I want more detail on that before bringing that to the whole board for approval.
Well, it still doesn't have the exact number on that.
And we don't have the exact number yet on that.
What that is, is Suzanne and I requested when looking at the plans with the architects, that they had, um, areas that had shelving built in, but only up to five feet. And we said, we're always gonna be short of storage, we want them to go all the way. So that's just modifying those things. Luckily, we have a lot of closets, we can put a lot of storage in, so...
Yeah. And I just want more detail on that before we, we bring that to the whole board for approval. But that's, you know, that's the one other thing that's out there that has a sticker shock value to it. And so I wanna raise that. It's roughly 33,000. And my, that number of $464,000 remaining in the balance, that number is in there right now, so...
So was, was your, were you making a motion before to approve?
Sure.
I can make a motion to approve.
That's fine. Make a grudging second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, a grudging aye.
I just have a, a thing with putting up higher shelving. I'm not exactly sure if I want elders up on a ladder.
But we're gonna make our staff do it.
Have them fall. Let me tell you about people falling off ladders. That's my field.
Yeah.
How's your wrists and your shoulders?
Okay.
So we're still supposed to do sewer?
Yeah, so we can, let's do, so, thank you very much all for coming. So sewer rates. So, it's not again, we're not, we're not voting on sewer rates tonight.
Thank God.
I, I just wanted to put this on the...
Good thing, 'cause I had a speech ready for you.
Oh, no, hey, you can have your speech, John, still. No, but I wanted to put this on the agenda to talk about what our plan is moving forward with sewer rates, and if we want to...
It's a real shitty deal here.
Yeah, yeah. If we want to, to have, basically, I would like to have a vote tonight if we wanna have a sewer rate hearing. Because, because out of town meeting, we, you know, I don't see anything after town meeting providing a good path to reducing, to, to kind of getting sewer in a good financial position. You know, all the things with free cash and all this other stuff that we had, this year not getting to, uh, pull all the money in. We collected $932,000 from, from sources for sewer rates this year, except impact. In order to balance the budget, we transferred $227,000 from sewer reserves to the budget to make up for the lack of free cash. We don't know yet, but we probably have $140,000 to put back into reserves after free cash is certified, which gives us a deficit of around $90,000 this year. So, or, I'm sorry, which gives us about, wait, do I have that number right?
It's a cushion.
A cushion of $90,000 left. So we're, we're basically bleeding our reserves account by $100,000 a year to keep the budget afloat. And, you know, we theoretically have a couple of years of that remaining until the reserves are run dry. Now, I don't have all these figures worked out exactly or here, but that's a, a rough number, and I just feel like we need to determine what we wanna do next and consider raising the rates, because we need to do something eventually. I know John's speech is gonna be about administrative charges, which...
That's one point.
I, I know that's one thing, and I do, I do wanna address that, and with the financial management team.
The other most important point is when this DPW was created, everything just went top of the line, one-third, 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 which is still not correct. So the DPW director, I know we've been through a bunch of them so far, but maybe this guy can figure out whether truly our one-third is paying and offsetting the highway department. Is the water department offsetting the highway department? We have, you know, everything's one-third across the board. And I've seen bills come across the desk that we're paying for tires on a loader that the sewer department never uses for thousands of dollars, you know? That stuff should have been put into snow budget, and it should have been addressed at that point that way. Not one-third, one-third, one-third. I think we have a real problem with managing our money.
And then yes, back to in the personnel costs too, to where time gets spent.
Yeah.
We want to hear that salary cut, first thing.
I know, but I, so, so all joking aside, we gotta figure out our path forward. So what is our path forward gonna be with this? 'Cause we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna wait too long before we can do something.
So what is our next deadline for a rate increase in order to hit the next bill, you know?
You have now, well, unless you vote tonight, you have missed, um, the May 1st billing. So by May 15, uh, sorry, by March 15, you would need to vote in order not to miss the August 1st billing. So it's a six-month lag, essentially.
Six months.
Okay.
So what I would recommend is to, just from my perspective, we're working on water and sewer regionalization possibilities. We need a little bit more time, because we're not there yet where we could talk about cost savings or, or other issues yet. We're still working out some of the administrative stuff with these other towns.
Maybe February timeframe for a hearing possibly? That would give us, I guess, some more options as far as to work things out in time to, if we'd wanna do an increase, hit that March 15 deadline?
Yeah, I'm hoping definitely by that point, I hope to have the administrative charge formula ironed out and that clear. So that's one aspect of this. And I just don't know, um, you know, Chris, with the one-third, one-third, is there anything we can do there to talk about that or address that? I don't wanna put you on the spot, you don't have to answer, you can say, let's, let's consider this, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the, the one-third, one-third, one-third is a simplistic argument.
Yeah.
Yes, there are co- that is why we, it's not that we hardly, but that's why we have a uniform department as in DPW. There are, is that I've, sometimes within this fiscal year, where various equipment are, are charged, one-third, one-third for, for, to the other, all the divisions. But it doesn't necessarily mean that that division might have used it the same way with the other divisions at a particular time. For example, the issue of the loader. This period we're in right now, most of the charges for the loaders, the trucks, have been put into snow and ice because we're preparing for the snow season. So that has, doesn't go into the, any of the divisions, it goes to so, so the night budget. But outside the snow budget, we have equipment that we all use. Some of them may not be used, may be used more by highway. But the utility divisions are always in that mode that they should not be, highway should not use, or building department should not use their equipment. But we, I, my, I keep educating them that it's no longer the old school, it's a department of public works. And so most of the administrative cost goes to one-third, one-third, and that includes myself and the fiscal superintendent. And that's one of the best ways to argument, to be able to get the cost right. So, but I try, I try to understand what it's important, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a uniform or a frequent occurrence. We also don't have a way to measure, uh, because sewer paid one-third, then sewer must use it at a, a certain amount of time to, or because highway paid one-third. So if there's anything, Mr. Chairman, it's a positive thing that we're able to be a unit so that the greater good is for the town, as opposed to the general fund, where, uh, many things we may not be able to meet up at a particular time because of general funds. And that will put our services or what we're supposed to do much, much better, so...
Okay. And, and another thing that this feeds into, just on our agenda here, is our fiscal year 2021 planning, and I think it's the year for DPW, correct? 2021, so maybe these are some of the things we can just think about when we're looking at that, you know, if we can make any changes this year, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying. Before the DPW, before it was combined and before it was set up the way it was, a lot of it came out of taxation and was funded through the highway department. When, when we needed a piece of equipment, when you needed another dump truck, when you needed another small truck, when you needed a new backhoe or, or excavator. You know, and they were to one point where they were charged by the hour to the water department or the sewer department as they need to. But when you buy a piece of equipment and you're splitting it three ways, it's a, it's a major hit to these departments that are self-sufficient, you know, supposedly. And, and it's really hard to budget for it. And I, I just think that, that the water and the sewer offsetting the highway, where if the highway was coming out of taxation, that's why I keep saying, the capital out of the water and the capital out of the wastewater should still be coming out of the taxation. That's the point I'm trying to make, that. A lot of times it's getting ignored or just not understood, you know?
Yeah, no, we talked about that.
You know, when, when we built the water filtration plant, most of that money came, came out of taxation, not out of the, the grant and the, the money to build the building was through taxation, not through water receipts.
Okay. Well, so let's, well, we can move, we can move into the fiscal year 2021 planning, but for, to close out sewer, I think, let's look at revisiting this in February.
Absolutely.
And really try to come up with where we're at, and then we can have a hearing before March 15th.
Can we do this later in February, second half of February, if we're doing that? Just to kind of give us as much time as possible to work out details.
Yeah, and I don't wanna put any pressure on the regionalization approach. It's more just, what do we need to do this coming year, yeah, yeah.
And the only reason that I, I wanna wait until we have more information is because that will give us a, a solid answer whether we're gonna have to have massive increases or there's some other path that we can take to avoid the massive increases.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, oh, 'cause in sewer, you're not only looking at, at just a budget number here right now, you're, you're looking at an expansion of the whole sewer system, the whole sewer plant, you know? If, if we can't regionalize.
Yeah.
And I don't think you wanna hear that number tonight.
Yeah, no, no, let's not mention that right now.
Because there's no funding there.
And then, and then, and then we have the...
When I was upgrading that in 88, I think 80% of it was paid by the federal government, you know? They had, they had grant programs out there in 88.
Yeah.
Not anymore.
No, and not, not much state money out there either right now.
Okay. So let's go to our fiscal year 2021 planning. So planning for our next fiscal year, what our budget priorities and those kind of things are gonna be is what I was envisioning with this. You know, we know we have a DPW focus, but are there other things in town as well that we're thinking of for priorities? Planner is one. I think, you know, with the new buildings coming on staff, what are we doing to maintain these buildings, clean these buildings? Night access, all those issues are gonna be something that we haven't been faced with really before. As much as we are now, we have three new buildings coming online and only one going off offline.
So that, that last part was something we talked about in the department meeting. We have buildings that are gonna be completed this spring and summer. So, uh, the senior center will be expecting to open and have the ribbon cutting, having programs. At the same time, the library will be an active construction site. So, as the building committees to start coordinating and thinking about how to operationalize these buildings as quickly as possible, or as efficiently as possible. And the other thing is that a lot, a lot of departments are going to have to coordinate their budgets in order to make sure that we have programs, capital, operations, and, um, and construction completed. So there's, uh, DPW's gonna be involved, senior center, uh, the 100 level budgets, um, the library, they're all gonna have to coordinate their budgets in order to make sure that these buildings are up and going and the programs that they're offering are gonna be in place.
Just as something to keep in mind, um, with the new buildings, especially once all of them come online, Gary can't do it all by himself, as far as in the past practice of saying, well, it's a new building, we don't have to touch it for 10 years and wait till the ceilings start falling down.
It's worked out oh so well.
Yeah, and, and then panicking and trying to find money. I mean, we're gonna have to, I mean, Gary was moved to the building maintenance foreman, but he doesn't have anybody working under him, I'm sure of it. So that's something to think about, just for the DPW budgeting priorities.
Yeah, and then, um, totally lost what I was gonna say, sorry, go ahead, yeah. No, 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 it was along those lines, uh, just, just figuring that out, so, yeah.
So as these, uh, pending budgets, uh, departments to have a meeting on like the 20th of, not the 20th of December, when, uh, 12th of December, in order to formulate a draft, uh, budget so that we can start looking at the coordination of these building projects.
Go ahead, Jean.
Because the senior center building committee very strongly encourages the select board to plan ahead and not let our building become obsolete. Take it while it's easy to take care of and take care of it. Don't wait.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And that's what I was gonna say, is, you know, create, do we wanna do anything where we create a real maintenance budget, where we're allocating funds for each one of these buildings? 'Cause that right now isn't in the building, isn't in the plan altogether, so...
And that's something the municipal building committee brought forward. We had started the conversation with the previous DPW director as to whether or not it made sense to create a centralized, uh, function.
Yeah, that would help the sewer instead of one-third, one-third, one-third. Now you can go one-quarter, one-quarter, one-quarter.
There we go, create a new department. We got John's vote to create this new department. We got John's vote to create this new department.
See, I'm tired, I'm still thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, it's one of the things that I would come back to the board. If you recall, when we created the, the building and cemetery division, I, I requested for a label and the board, because of budget and also the short timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
The board asked for us to go out for a one-year contract. So, and so we'll be coming back to the board. And now that also with these buildings, and because of their new buildings, we also, some of the items in the buildings who still be under warranty, we also need people to make sure that those warranties are kept. So, there'll be some probably period of training. So as we're getting to the point where, for example, these personal agent buildings been turned over to the, to the board, where we'll be talking with the OPM. And so, I would like to get all the information they have right now. So, so those are the things that will come before the board. The issue of buildings and grounds would be where the maintenance would be in my recommendation. Plus, s, these new buildings, we also, the board is talking about access. It's just like you, my recommendation for the town hall, we'll be requiring that the new buildings have, we'll be able to have, um, a good pro, a system to come in and, and, and go in and go out. And some probably, some also, I'll be requesting the board as time goes on, some, the various committees, chairs has to come up with some more responsibility so that they can also be, you know, responsible to make sure that who comes in for their meeting and when they're leaving. So that, uh, those kind of things, I will be able to monitor them with the electronic file system.
Yeah. What is the, the senior center? How is the, how are the locks working for that? Do you remember?
We can, we have the main dining room, which can be isolated from the rest of the building.
And that's accessible by a?
It is a key lock.
It is a key lock, okay, okay.
One of the things, Mr. Chairman, the key is good, but in today's planning, because of multi-use.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree.
And many people, it be, it better to us to come up with a better system where we can monitor who, who was the last who came in. And also, if, uh, not everybody who comes in should have the key.
Mm-hmm.
Provided, we have good schedule. And every group or entity that is approved to come in, in this case, for example, committees, they are, the committee chairs will be responsible to make sure that things are no problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, based on the key I was given for town hall.
Yeah.
I think it might have been from 1659.
Once we have a system that works, we don't change.
You have to get used to it.
Yeah.
Actually, the fire chief, when you put the fire system and the security system in the sewer department and the highway department.
Correct, yes.
It, it, it's a good system.
Correct.
Everybody knows their own number.
That's what we're putting in at Hadley.
You know who's in and out.
Correct.
Each person is responsible for themselves and their own number.
And that's, it's a computerized system and it can be changed.
Right.
Yes, yes.
We will address that.
Yeah.
At least for the main room that people might wanna access.
Yeah, it can be good, yeah.
Public access.
Yeah, because you can always give different people, you, you could each have a different code to get in that would work and all of a sudden we don't want Joyce in there anymore and we cut her code.
Out again. At least they wanna keep me where I'm working, that's a help.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, you're gonna be a senior real quick.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I also.
I am a senior, I hate to tell you.
I think that this, this new building, they, they will also be cameras.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be good to, especially because it's a public building.
Yeah. Are there cameras on the senior center?
Yeah, there are, okay.
Totally cameras, inside and outside.
Great. Anything else we wanna discuss with fiscal 2021?
I think, uh, 2021, we'll be moving into, already had a second year of ambulance.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's time to still keep on the radar, uh, doing our own ambulance service at some point.
Or regionalize.
Or regionalizing. I mean, we need to still look further into this. We're, we're doing well with it, um, even if we were to have a basic ambulance, because you can't just jump into an ALS, uh, ambulance.
Yeah.
You have to go basic first. That's a whole year process before that can even move forward with another, with the other step. So, um, I'd still like to keep that on the radar too.
Mm-hmm, okay. Anything else? Good, okay. Special town meeting follow-up, even though we touched on a couple of things.
Let's not get, we're going into 8:30 here.
I know, yeah.
Two executive sessions.
Yeah, well, we'll wrap it up. Anything, the main highlight.
Do we have to set the date for?
Yeah, so the main, the main thing is.
Let's do that.
We have six ballot questions, um, and we need to set the ballot, uh, date. There are two dates that, um, that will work for Jessica's office. One is December 19th, get it done quickly. Or the other one is January 7th.
I say December 19th, let's just get it done.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Sooner the better, don't know what the weather is.
Make a motion.
Make the motion.
Go, go ahead.
Make a motion that we hold our election December 19th for the Prop 2 and a half.
Okay, just got something for you all to sign on.
Second?
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's just Christian.
All right, hey. Um, okay, let's, uh, let's revisit this later, uh, town meeting follow-up, unless there's anything critical anyone wants to say right now.
No, I just want the money, that's all.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it, okay, let's just do that for now. Um, let's do our Hadley Tree Day proclamation. I can quickly read that. Open it here.
Just hand it to him, he can read it from now.
So, in observance of Hadley Tree Day on November 16th, 2019, and a Tree City USA qualification event, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Days was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And now therefore, we the Select Board of the Town of Hadley, Massachusetts, on behalf of the ha, inhabitants, declare that November 16th, 2019 be known as Hadley Tree Day. Given this 13th day of November in the year of 2019. Signed by the board, we have the ceremony taking place on November 16th in the common, at what time? 2 p.m.? Is it 2 p.m.? Okay. So that's this Saturday at 2 o'clock. Is anyone from the Select Board planning on being there?
Uh, yes.
You guys both? Great. I have a slew of soccer games to go to, otherwise I would be there. Um.
Hopefully it's warmer for all of us.
Yeah, hopefully you can put a shovel on the ground. Well, thank you for doing this and I can't wait to see the tree that's planted there.
Yeah.
It'll be exciting.
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
A motion to.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other comments on that or?
No.
Good, okay. Move on. So.
Got that.
Uh, town administrator report, David, would you like to go through quickly?
So not a whole lot is happening between Thursday town meeting and, uh, the long weekend and today, but we did have that department head meeting today. We did talk about coordinating the budgets across divisions in order to accomplish the goals that we talked about. The other thing that we talked about was, uh, the future use of Goodman Memorial Library building itself. Um, and that there are renovations that are required, which we hope to approach CPA, uh, get funding for specifically the novice tube wiring, the loose ceiling, and the, uh, making at least one, uh, unisex bathroom accessible on the main floor. Um, there'll have to be some sort of formal vote between the trustees and the Select Board to transfer care and custody of the building over to the Select Board. And the Select Board will have to think about future uses of that building. Um, other than that, it's been a long weekend and, uh, we sail down the river, I can tell you all about it.
Don't we have, don't we have ownership of that building anyway? It comes under our purview?
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, but the, the peculiarity of the law is that they have to vote formally to transfer care and custody, not ownership of the care and custody over to you.
Oh, the trustees?
The trustees or whatever.
Do you have to do the reverse with the new building? To give care and custody to the new building?
Yeah.
It's true, yeah, I know, that is a good question.
You might think about that one.
I have to look into that.
I mean, if they wanna pay to keep or to remodel it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, and I just wanted to mention, we had on our agenda the number 5.6, West Street Route 9, school transportation parking concerns. We're gonna skip over that this meeting and, and address that at a future date after we get out there. Um, other, I was just hoping maybe, David, you could give everyone a quick Nixle refresher just with, um, the bad weather coming and if a, if a building's closed or something along those lines, is it, you know, are there any special Nixle, um, things you should sign up for?
Yeah, um, the easiest way is to text Hadley to triple eight, triple seven, so 888-777. Just text Hadley. It'll reply back with keywords and you can sign up for as many of those keywords as you would like. But if, uh, if you don't add any of those keywords like Hadley DPW or, uh, what's the one for town hall? Hadley Gov.
Yes.
Um, you're only gonna get the real critical emergencies from the police, the fire chief.
Okay.
If you want informational stuff, you have to opt in. So that we don't bomb argue with, with the text messages, so.
How can you text somebody when they're not in your phone? How can you text?
Uh, you, I'll show you.
You just text the number.
She's already, she's already registered.
Yeah, you just add.
I am.
Yeah, I did, I did your phone. You're all set.
Perfect.
Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to give everyone that refresher with the winter coming on and possibly the senior center could be closed or town hall.
Seniors can sign up for that service at the senior center.
Okay.
Their, uh, technology challenge.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
And Hadley Media and I are working on a instructional video, uh, this week.
Okay.
So it'll be on Hadley Media soon.
We'll just get the word out as much as we can. Thank you. And that is everything for.
No, it's not, we need to talk about future meetings.
Future, future meetings?
Future meetings.
Okay.
So what's the schedule?
Oh, the schedule.
So we're not gonna throw in any extras, are we?
Okay.
Coming to the end of the year here.
I have one next week, the 20th.
You do, I'm so glad you do.
I have one.
Have fun.
December 4th. One Thanksgiving Eve, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, Lockn'Bills.
Uh, one, 12, 12, well, 11/20, 12/4, 12/18.
Why 3 in December?
Uh, there's just two.
No, he's, he's got the 4th and the 18th.
4th and the 18th.
I'd like you to switch that.
You wanna switch it?
I do.
Okay. That works for me.
I'd like to go the first two.
The 4th and the 11th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Does that, cause there's a Legion dinner that night on the 11th, on the 18th rather.
12/4, 12/11.
Does that work for you?
For me? That's, that's fine. We can do that. Oh, I had another meeting scheduled that night and I'll have to reschedule. That's okay. For you, Joyce, I'll do it.
Well, you're so kind. I wouldn't be here on the 18th.
But we are meeting on the 20th.
I appreciate that.
We are meeting on the 20th, yeah. Um, and then the first of the year, I don't have any in there right now.
That's okay, we can do these two.
What I've got for you is January 8th, um, and January 15th.
And then that's Friday is the MMA conference.
That would be the 23rd, or the 24th rather.
Oh, not the 17th?
Not the 17th, it's, it's a week like this year.
Done. Set that, cause I put it in my calendar and worked on it.
Okay. And well, we can, the first, you, when, when would you guys like to do, schedule the rest of, uh, the winter?
In January.
In January?
January.
Okay, let's do it then. Okay. Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Any announcements?
I think I have a couple. Um, we have the cross-country Hopkins Academy team qualified for the state tournament and that will be John Hanscom from the boys', um, team. And for the first time, Hopkins Academy girls, um, ever to score in Western Mass meet. So congratulations to them and to Jeff Mish, their coach. He's worked hard over the last couple of years, uh, forming this team. It's relatively new to, um, our school and, uh, they're doing a great job. Uh, we have, um, the passing of John Banash, um, condolences to his family and to his partner Irene. Um, John marched, uh, many a year with me in the, um, Hadley Memorial Day Parade. He was a, a veteran and, um, you know, he enjoyed doing that. So condolences to his family. Then we had Cynthia Payne, uh, didn't personally know her, but she is related to the, uh, Hadley McCoinesick family and condolences to them on her passing. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
No. Motion to go into executive session.
All right. Thank you. Um. As Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the board has moved and seconded, oh,